All right, let's call this meeting ordered. Jenny Bruce take the roll.
Mr. Conrady.
Here.
Mr. Yucitis.
Here.
Mrs. Ott.
Here.
Mrs. Forst.
Here.
Ms. Tremely.
Here.
Ms. Forst.
Present.
Mr. Kaiser.
Here.
All right, now if everybody will join us in closing the leaders.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in uniform with liberty and justice for all.
All right, looks like I'll be looking for a motion for approval of initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed seventy-one million five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed seventy-one million five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Is there any discussion?
So, I thought about this since last week quite a bit, and I really thought about your comments Dale and your comments Kathy with going down in dollar amounts. I do not know if seventy-one is enough for the people of our community. As what I mean by say enough, I mean is that low enough compared to last year when we went to referendum. So that's where I'm struggling, going back and forth with that. I think a lot of the community wants what's best for our students. I just don't know if they can afford that dollar amount of seventy-one point five nine.
Any more discussion?
I would kind of agree, but I don't know if that works. Not over the top of this because...
We didn't reach out anything?
I just have this like, I don't know. You talk to people and they kind of come up with a dollar amount between last weekend and now and it's...
But I do believe that we've set them numbers, they did the studies at the sixty-some million there, and then with the athletics study, that was that twenty-some million, we shaved off ten million off of that. So it's seventy-one million. I think that's the area where this is going to be most favorable. That's my opinion, just because of what we have shaved off. They pretty much approved it, it was right there borderline. You take another ten off, I think that's going to be the difference, and that's where we're at. So, but what do you know?
I think it's sticker shock is what it is. When people ask how much is it? Oh, that's a lot of money. If I had a quarter for that in this past week...
And the other thing is people ask me, well, what specifically is included in that? And we were told initially, when we started this, that we would be given sheets that gave us the specifics of the specific items that were going to be included. We did not receive that. We've received a general notebook. We don't know which items on that notebook were picked and put into those numbers. And frankly, people want to know what's in it. They don't want to...
We already get that right now.
Yeah, yeah, you'll have that available.
Well, we've received a breakdown of the building needs and what those expenditures are. In addition to that, with the breakdown of the athletic part of it, we had a break...
No, we got a general number. We didn't see what's included in that general number. We didn't get the specifics on it. And that's what I'm... And that's what people are asking, well, what specifically is included in this? Well, I can't tell them what specifically is included in that. So, that's where I have a problem. And I told you, I told you at the last meeting that I wasn't comfortable with that number. I thought we could shave more off.
The detail of those numbers were gone through with the Board Facility Committee the week prior to last week Monday's meeting. So the total dollar figure that the Board discussed a week ago came from the projects that were reviewed at the committee level. Nicole, if I could ask, do you, do you have, well, two questions? A dollar, dollar figure in your mind? And secondly, some possible areas, if you are going to reduce it, what do you have in mind on reducing?
Dollar amount, if we could get it down, I know you guys are going to cringe at this, but if we could get it down to fifty and say, hey, we went in half. And I know it's, I don't know if we can. I did not look close enough. I don't know if it's possible.
Well, I would bet we can, but then that would mean foregoing those priorities that are lower on that list. And we've heard from the community, those are important items, they don't want to see go.
Right. And then, but then on the flip side, if we cut out too much, when are we going to go back to the well and ask for more money? And I don't know when we can do that. That's the struggle that I have. Like, these are very important, but where do you draw the line? And I, just the feedback that I've heard, seventy-one point five is a lot. And I said, well, if you break it down by month, this is how much it should be. Then they step back a little bit. I just think it's that initial sticker shock that is hard for people to swallow.
And seeing those graphs with the mill rate where we, we are compared to other districts of our sub, like ourselves, the mill rate, the levy, and that all made so much sense when I saw it. I mean, obviously, that's a large number, but when you see that, then it all puts things, it puts things into perspective.
This don't, like, this total point with these graphs, I do think are very informative and kind of put people at ease a little bit more.
I agree, the sticker shock. We have to keep in mind too, that when the survey came out, we learned that wasn't half, fifty percent of the people are following or are not paying, don't know about the details. Half of the people, so we know communicating those facts, just like we were educated, communicating those facts are going to be so, that will be so important, that will be key.
And I believe that when we get along with this thing, Nexus and that communication, things are going to change compared to the way it was last communicated out to what it's going to be this time. There's, I believe it's going to be a total difference. And I really believe in Nexus and getting this word out there. I really truly believe in it. And if we don't do this, we're doing an injustice to this community because we are not maintaining our schools at that point. I have a question at this down, whether we're really doing justice to the schools. And I know it, I know that people don't like to hear that many ways, but there are things that need to be taken care of. We've got makeup area units in that high school, I've been there since the day the high school was built. People say we didn't maintain the buildings. It'll come again, because if you walk in them rooms and you see the equipment, just watch the videos online right now. That equipment is immaculate. Our, our staff has done a hell of a job keeping that equipment. We need to help our staff also to maintain the schools. And if we maintain the schools, we are going to be able to give a higher education. And if we don't maintain them, go to education opportunity.
I mean, I agree, we have to invest in order to move forward. But at the same time, like I said, I just wanted to bring forward that sticker shock is hard for people to swallow.
That's where I believe Nexus will come in and put the sale on.
As part of the process, we'd go to referendum. We come forward with the dollar amount or whatever it is you're going to do for a referendum, just like the city might do with whatever they've got going on right now. And then once that is passed by the city or passed by us to go forward with that resolution, then comes the education point to explain to people, here's what it is, here's what we're going to do so that you have the information when you go to the polls to vote. And they maintain, I mean, I've done this myself in the past, and I know what it takes. They maintain they have a system that is going to be able to help the community understand what the seventy-one million dollars is for, what rooms is for, what hardware and equipment and stuff is for. And that's part of their job. That's one of the reasons that we've, we've worked with them is going forward. So, you know, I hear you. You say seventy-one billion, boy, sticker shock. It's true. If you said forty million...
Right, that's the other point. Like, where are you drawing the line? I get that.
You know, the dollar number without an explanation of where this is going to go and how it's going to be used, not only short term but long term into the district's future, is part of the whole process of going to referendum. You know, I spoke at length last time regarding the sixty-one versus the seventy-one, whatever. And I don't know what else to say at this point. I said I would go along with whatever the consensus from the Board was along those lines, whether it was sixty-one, whether it was thirty, whether it was a hundred and twenty or whatever. Because I was not part of the facilities committee that put in hours in the examination of facilities and everything else, people that I trust, people that know about these things. I wasn't part of that community, and we have to kind of trust these people in terms of the stuff that they've worked on and they've done. That still doesn't mean that it's going to pass.
Oh, right.
It means this is what we're going to go forward with and, well, people that remember, and they say, well, the last one was close to ninety-five, ninety-six, almost a hundred million. Okay. Many people at that time said, some of the meetings that we had at the high school, it's got to be pared down. Well, it was pared down with a couple of different numbers, sixty-one and seventy-one. And here we are.
And the other thing is anybody building a house understands these numbers. Five years ago, we built a hundred thousand dollar home. Today, build that same house, three to four hundred thousand. It's funny how that works, that the school district did the same thing, you know?
Right.
So...
I just wanted to bring it up because, you know, we can't talk in reverse, you know?
Obviously.
If I may, I just, I want to recap a little bit, coming back to the work that we did that was brought to the facility, the Board Facility Committee back on, on July twenty fourth meeting that we had held, you know, based upon, and I'm going to turn to our Nexus partners over here. I think if we back up a few weeks, the polling data seemed to suggest that like a sixty-one, sixty-one and a half million dollar referendum would be supported. That's what the polling data seemed to be pretty strong support. I recall Peter Leatherman even a week ago Monday talked about, I think we were near sixty percent support on the second round of polling at that, at that dollar figure. Which is why when we worked through the prioritized listing of work at the high school in Grant Elementary, you know, those main prioritized themes that we identified, which were safety, security, infrastructure improvements, those main projects and teaching and learning spaces or educational classroom type spaces, that's where we had worked, that prioritized listing down to that figure that came in. And I'm just going back and looking at the presentation, that was about thirteen point eight million at Grant Elementary, doing much of the work. We did whittle away a few things, made a few cuts out of there, but, you know, largely the improvements and the additions that we talked about, including the addition of a main office with a secure entry on the front of the building. Thereafter then, looking at the high school, similar approach, we ended up with, I believe it was about forty-seven point six million there. The two added up to sixty-one and a half million approximately. But at the high school, that did involve, you know, the infrastructure improvements, electrical, mechanical, air handling unit replacements. It involved remodeling a number of classroom spaces. It included additions to tech ed, ag science. It included the addition of a new main office, secure entry expansion of the commons. All of that work came into the tune of about sixty-one and a half million. Beyond that, looking at the physical education slash athletics area, because we did have an interest in trying to touch that area as well, you know, we ended up with about ten million after we made the reductions. That's where the additional ten million came from to get us to the seventy-one and a half. And as we talked about a week ago, we were contemplating for quite a while there on that athletics, physical education component, maybe a second question. And that's why we have the different scenarios. Again, this is a little bit of a recap, but the three scenarios we talked about a week ago was scenario one, was that sixty-one and a half million for what I just described. Scenario two was a two-question approach where the main question was for that, that main sixty-one and a half figure. A second question at a little over ten million for those physical education, athletic components. And then scenario three was just going with the single question and adding those two back together. Again, I just wanted to give that quick recap because there, there was a difference between that sixty-one and a half and the seventy-one and a half million dollar figure that, that we, that we had talked about a week ago at the special board meeting that we had at that particular time. I think that that covers an overview, like Kevin and Jeff, would you agree?
Right, yeah. And I would just add that, as you can imagine, I sit at a lot of board meetings. So what you guys are experiencing is something that every board experiences at this point. It's a, it's a work in the process, it really is. And to Ryan's point, I think it's important for you to think about, because I'm not going, I'm not going to suggest more than what you guys determine you should do, but you should think about, going back, the engagement that's been done with your staff, the staff survey, of course, the community facility committee that was convened at nine times, two rounds of polling, engagement with your students, and then the list goes on from there. And that all was kind of a follow-up approach to get you guys to where you ultimately were over the last couple of weeks and tonight. Should you be sitting there feeling as though you are one hundred and ten percent sure about this decision? I don't think it is an acquisition, but I think what Dale said is important, is it's incumbent upon us to help you now tell the story effectively. And we'll talk about that after you guys catch up with what you wanted to do in resolutions. We've got some things we want to share with you. It's incumbent upon us to make sure we take the knowledge we have, obviously, with this all across the state of Wisconsin, but also the specific, let's go ahead and hear Marshall of the conversations that we had, and help you, put you in the best positions that Peter said. When you get, when everybody who shows up and votes, and goes to that voting booth, it's a cost benefit decision for them, right? The cost, the investment needs to be made, does that justify the benefits? And it's up to us to get the people as much information as we can and make that decision.
I made the point last time too, that I was never in favor of two-part or two-questions on a referendum. In this case, for example, the second one is ten million dollars roughly for whatever the question would be for the athletic part. People may not even be looking at the fact that it's ten million dollars for athletic stuff. It's just, okay, well, this part's cheaper, so I'm going to vote for this. And then that passes, and yet, the main part of the referendum is all the infrastructure that needs to be replaced. The other thing that bothers me a little bit is this word maintain or maintenance. Stuff hasn't been maintained, or we don't do maintenance, and that's far from the truth. The fact is, things do wear out eventually. I mean, you can maintain any piece of equipment for a long period of time, but eventually, you've got to get to the point where you say, okay, well, we've done just about everything we can with this, and gosh, we can't even get parts to maintain it anymore. Some of the stuff we have here, it's got to be replaced. I mean...
Where it's no longer efficient.
Where it's no longer efficient with a lot of standards today and energy-wise and whatever else. So, the two-question referendum, I spoke somewhat at length last time, and I'm repeating myself. I'm sorry, but the two-part question, one has always bothered me, and I've seen a lot of districts where that becomes a real issue. People get dividing the baby a little bit in terms of, well, this one's cheaper, so I still want to go to vote for it. That may not be the primary one that you actually need.
I appreciate everybody playing devil's advocate. I think that's important to do in just about every situation. I agree that seventy-one point five million has, has some shock value attached to it. I also believe that when you consider the mill rating at five point one-one, that should that pass, it would be about a twenty percent increase in taxes roughly. So I believe that that number has some shock value as well, but when you consider that five point one-one is easily the lowest mill rate in all the surrounding significant districts. That you could take any amount of a referendum, I mean, you could cut it in half at thirty-five million and still a ten percent increase in taxes. So I mean, there's shock value to that even. But when you're attaching it to an already extremely low number in five point one-one, the increase is going to be, if it were seventy-one and a half million to pass, the increase will put us at roughly six point five for the mill rate, which still keeps us in the lower half of the surrounding communities and with their significant school districts. In fact, it is a roughly half of the highest one. So, I think if that's communicated effectively, that, that has a good shot of being successful.
I'm not so sure whether communicating it makes any sense because, quite frankly, our constituents don't live in those other school districts. They live in this school district.
Yeah.
And if they had, if, so, you know, the impact in another school district is not going to matter that much to them. What they're going to say is, this is, this is me, this is the dollar amount, this is what I'm looking at. They're not going to care that somebody else is paying it higher.
I agree.
They don't look there.
But a year ago, our mill rate was higher than, than what it would be if this would pass.
I'll tell you right now, in many of the referendums, referendat that we've gone to in the past, one of the talking points, presentation points, education points, whatever you want to call them, that was presented to people was our mill rate. And that number, in writing, in print, in wherever it was, was out there, and they saw what we were doing compared to other districts in the area. That was one of the main reasons that those referenda passed, because I ran those. And I know that for a fact, that would, a number of people that would come to me and say, I can't believe we're only spending, we're only spending, I understand, that's kind of an exaggeration statement, but we're spending this much in terms of what these other districts are spending on their school district and their kids? You know? I think that they would just say it's a, it's a no-brainer, to be honest with you. That's kind of how the conversation went with that. I'm not making that up. That's just my experience having, having run those and having done that and having to put out the FAQs, which are the sheets of information to people or stuff on the internet or whatever else that was involved. And it was, it shocked people as far as our mill rate number.
Any more discussion?
I just want to say that I appreciate that we're having this conversation one more time because I'm on the facilities committee and I still, like, I felt really good every time I left here about what we want to do. And then it's that time in between where you start to think about things and you start to wonder and you get curious and you hear this comment or that comment. And I've heard, oh, sixty-one point five, I'd vote yes for that, no problem. Seventy-one point five, I'm not sure, I'd have to think about that a little bit more. But then we get together and we talk about this stuff, and it's not things that I always remember when I'm having these conversations, more specifically, like the mill rate type stuff. So I'm glad that we're like retouching on that because it does bring back that reassurance of like, okay, this is why I felt good about what we were doing and moving forward with it. So, I'm just honestly thankful for that.
Sure. No matter what number we come forward with, it's going to be, you know, we're going to be raising taxes to a certain extent. Is that a popular thing to do? Yeah, no one's going to raise my taxes any more than this.
Yeah.
Okay. But again, I think the education piece in terms of, this is what we're going for, this is why we're doing it, here's the reasons, here's what we need, here's how it's going to help the district, how it's going to help students in safety and education and whatever else applies in this kind of situation. Some of that, the athletic part, some of that is a safety issue, but the rest of it would be a big portion of that, as a matter of fact. So I, the bottom line is, you put your number out there...
And let people...
And then the discussion starts, and yes, people hear seventy-one million. Oh, my God, that's a lot of money. Yeah, it is.
With some extra words in it, yeah.
Yeah, right. But I'll tell you something, if you follow like Journal Sentinel and some of the other state papers right now, and you look at what other school districts around the state of our size are going for, hundred and fifteen, a hundred and fifty, a hundred... Again, it's what we're doing here that makes a difference. I understand that. But the mill rate factor is a factor. We're telling people, this is the mill rate, this is why we're doing it, this is how much we're spending, this is what we're spending on our kids, and, you know, folks, we're not out of line here.
I think that's the other, like, nerve-wracking part, is that we know we need these things, right? So you want to make sure you're doing what you can to get our schools what they need. So it's like, oh my gosh, like, is the, you know, so, but, I know.
Bottom line is, the public will make a decision.
Yeah.
Or the other.
All we can do is give them the option.
Give them the information, tell them why we're doing it, how much money we need, why we need that money, what it's going towards, that's all part of the education piece. And do the best you can along those lines. You put it out there, maybe it passes, maybe it doesn't pass.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, Jenny take the roll, please.
Okay. Mr. Yucitis.
I'm agreeing to the resolution.
We're approving the initial resolution.
Okay, yes.
Mrs. Ott.
Yes.
Mrs. Forst.
Yes.
Ms. Tremely.
Yes.
Ms. Forst.
No.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Conrady.
Yes.
All right, with that motion passed, now we're looking for approval of resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of an initial resolution authorizing the insurance of general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed seventy-one million five hundred and seventy-five thousand.
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of an initial resolution authorizing the insurance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed seventy-one million five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Hi, second.
Is there any question?
I just was, is that, that's what you, where you write up the question that's going to be on the ballot, right?
Yeah, good question, Tara. I'll explain a little bit further. So, the first motion that was, the first resolution that was just approved is you as a board are authorizing up to that dollar amount or not to exceed that dollar amount, that bonds be issued in that amount for the projects that are listed on the resolution itself. This next step, the second resolution, is you as a board are saying that you only move forward, that you're authorizing that this be put as a question on the ballot for the November fifth election, and it will only move forward and occur if the voters vote yes in a majority. So that's the, just the way the, the process is set up by, by statute, is the initial, is you saying you'll authorize a bond up to that amount. But the second step is, it only proceeds if the voters say yes.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, Jenny please take the roll.
Mrs. Ott.
Yes.
Mrs. Forst.
Yes.
Ms. Tremely.
Yes.
Ms. Forst.
No.
Mr. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Conrady.
Yes.
Mr. Yucitis.
Yes.
All right, with that, we'll move on to the whole business. Facility improvement planning update. Now, this is where we get to see where Nexus can go to work.
Yeah, they, Kevin Hickman and Jeff Pangin from Nexus Solutions are here to give a, give a short presentation about the next steps moving forward in the process. Kevin?
Thank you, Ryan. And thank you for the board, not only for having us back this evening, and thank you for having us here throughout this process to support you. And congratulations on taking the important step forward. So, what we wanted to do, Jeff and I wanted to make sure we agree tonight, is to, I'll tell you, our objective is for you to walk away this evening confident in the fact that the plan to go engage with your community, get their questions answered, and be flexible and nimble in terms of our approach to doing that. So I just wanted to talk through with you the approach. So first of all, you know, kind of the, the drivers for Jeff and I and others think about supporting you is, number one, our objective is always going to be clear, concise information. We recognize that in most cases, if we can make it easy to find the information and get people's questions answered in a way that is relevant to them, that's going to be an important piece of how we approach this. You'll see that as we talk, the approach as we go through here. Having a personalized proactive outreach with folks. In other words, go to where... In other words, go to where the people are and how they prefer to communicate it. We did see, and you saw as well in some of the polling, you know, as you might expect, there's a mix of people that want something in their hand, that they can grab, that they can read, that they can hold on to. There's also a mix of people that prefer to get their information, whether it be generally through electronic means, social media, website, tools like that. So, we'll talk about that with you, too. And then, finally, reinforcing the why. So, why now is important for people to understand, why the priorities that were selected. You may recall, there were over a hundred and fifty million in total needs identified in the district. Ultimately, the board worked hard to get that down. Something was left in less than half of that. So, that meant that some priorities were selected, some were not selected, and why. And why it is a approach that is a financially responsible one as well. So, those are really drivers that I use and Jeff uses and other people use essentially to kind of filter how, as we approach. So, some key messages, and by... By all means, this is not all key messages, and we're definitely want to hear what... If you have any thoughts on this. But as I have listened over the last eight months or so to a lot of conversations, a lot of questions that have been asked, it really always seems to come back to, in one way or another, you could say in different ways, but these three things. So, the first one being, how now is the time? The district has not passed a facility referendum since two thousand and five. So, we're going on almost twenty years here without a significant funding tool utilized in the district to address your facility needs. So, prioritized facility needs, they cannot, whether you like this idea or not, they can't be addressed within the district's annual budget. And frankly, they're gonna continue to become more costly to address in the future. So, one question we often get, part of the FAQs, part of our outreach of people, is, "Well, what happens if the referendum isn't successful? What happens if we wait to address these priorities?" And it's... Certainly, there's complexities to the answer, but basically, what it comes down to is, what costs you a certain amount of dollars today, and Mark just alluded to this, is gonna cost more down the road to fix. So, that also aligns with what we see here as a financially responsible approach by the board and the district, to try and attempt to solve challenges in a way that minimizes, to the extent you can, the impact to taxpayers. Second, I think focusing on needs. Although the referendum doesn't address all facility needs, we know that, identified in the district's long-term plan, it does provide a solution for the priorities identified by, again, staff, students, community, and other stakeholders in this process. So, I think if you're talking to someone out there in the community as you're pumping gas or grabbing fish on Friday night, really stress the fact that these are needs that we mentioned before, whether it be the starting off last October with the board workshop, having a district-wide staff provide input, students provide input, polling efforts, you name it. It really ended up helping you focus on needs. And then, finally, a real financially responsible approach. And I know when you say that, certainly anybody can debate that, but the really the facts are, the referendum's gonna allow you, as the district, to address the prioritized facility needs. And I think Stevie alluded to this a minute ago, but it's gonna continue to keep Marshfield's school tax rate below the average area districts. So, when I say financially responsible, am I sitting here passing judgment on a seventy-one billion versus sixty-one million? No. What I'm saying is, when you look at the total picture in terms of how you're approaching this, I believe you take a very financially responsible approach to it. So, we're gonna have key messages that we want to stay aligned with in the communications so folks, in the limited time they have to digest this information, really hear these in a consistent way. Any input on any of those, anything you made for your district?
In the first note, prioritized facility needs cannot be addressed within the district's annual budget. I think that'll need to be detailed on explanation, given why can't... A reminder or educational piece as to why. Why can't we just save? Why can't we just save money and tell we have enough money to pay for it? So, I think that's an important part of the message that has to be made.
Right. And to your point before, I think it was Dale that made it, we don't wanna give anybody the impression that maintenance hasn't been taken place. It certainly has in the district. Quite a bit of it, and it's been done very well within the budget available. But the fact of the matter is, the size, the scope, the cost of the priorities that you have in front of you right now, could you come up with a plan to knock off X percentage that every single year within an annual budget? I guess in theory you could, but you'd be talking decades in the making. And as we said before, if we were to extrapolate, extrapolate out for you what it would cost to address all these over a series of decades, it's gonna cost your taxpayers a lot more money rather than... No. So, thank you. Any other questions?
No. I was just gonna say, like, focusing on needs, I think, is a big one. Kind of, I feel like that one, I mean, the financially responsible, go pretty hand-in-hand. But I do think that comes there to, like, that itemization that you had brought up before and having that so we can show them, like, you know, this... These are not, like, ridiculous, out of the, you know, realm of reality. We need this stuff, like...
Yeah. I mean, if you look at the list, and as Ryan says, it kind of breaks out into those three buckets, right? You've got, forgive me, Dale, but you've got maintenance issues. You've got classroom and physical education spaces, special education needs falls within that. And then, you've got safety and security. And so, one thing definitely we'll continue to stress with folks is, if you look at the polling, look at the stakeholder feedback, we've got all three of those are important. Certainly, safety and security was number one on that list, but all three of those were important. And if you look at the way the projects break out with the multi-juliardary buckets, I would have a hard time looking at any of those as something other than need, and we'll explain to folks why that is, right? And we'll also explain, you didn't ask this, Tara, but I think it's part of it, is also explain what the district has been able to accomplish within annual budgets by putting a plan together and being responsible with that, which has been a lot. So, all right. So, I did wanna go with you through with you then. There's a lot on this next slide, but I did wanna talk to you about kind of the conference of nature in terms of how we approach this. First of all, right... When I say right now, really, now that the switch has been flipped to referendum communications, we'll have our folks working on the website as a home base. And just so everybody knows, the objective right now is by the thirteenth of August, which is, I believe, the first night of our, kind of, first series of back-to-school events at your buildings. And it's also the night, for those of you in the facility planning community here, that will be back with that committee to present information to them on the specifics of the communications and getting their input. But that would be the... We'd like to launch before then, but that would be the drop date to launch that website, working with the district to get that launched. And really, we look at that as home base. That's where all the information around the referendum will reside. So, what... Beyond the website then, what kind of builds the whole conference of nature and the plan? Certainly, and I don't want you to look at this as all-inclusive, but there's... We've got, as you see there, a fact sheet. We'll have a very concise, clear fact sheet that'll cover all the things you might expect that it would cover, everything from the scope of the projects to the process to get to this point, to the impact regarding the tax impact, to where to find more information, how to vote, all those types of things will be part of that fact sheet. It'll have a QR code on it that you can easily scan, go right back to the website. So, even if you're sitting there, you have one in your hand, you can hit it, somebody says, "Scan this." When you get home, take a look at this section on the website. It tells you everything you need to know about that for any other question. Dale mentioned FAQs. I've already been working for the last couple of months on these as I listen to the questions you guys have, as I listen to the questions we hear from people in the community. And believe it or not, there's always about ten questions that in every community I work with are... They may be asked differently, but they're very similar in every community. So, we got those started, and then we've got some additional questions added. Those'll be a core piece of the website, and it'll be a living document. It'll be a dropdown. So, people can click on the question, the dropdown, they'll get the answer. And then, literally, we meet every single week with the district. And the first question we ask as part of that agenda is, "What are you hearing? What questions are popping up that we don't have an answer to at this point?" So, those will be continually added to all the time. And we'll also use that to fuel social media updates, all those types of things, as we get additional questions. Videos, you've already started to see those. It's been interesting to see, there's been a lot of, I think, sharing of those videos. There's been a lot of views. There's been a lot of comments on them, which is, I view that as all good things. So, we're working on releasing some additional videos, and then there'll be a video that actually this week we'll work on, now that you're moving forward, that'll really tell the financial story of this and get a lot easier to tell than that.
Does the board know where to find those videos or even the public? Seeing we've got the media here.
Yeah. So, right now, they're currently... The easiest way to find it is on marshfield.facilityfacts.org. That's the facility planning website. If not, there's a link to that on the district's website as well, that you can look at the videos that way. And then, I believe you've released them all via your social media as well, so...
I think where we really struggle is pushing these notifications and informations out.
Right.
Because people aren't gonna go... Well, maybe they will, search for it, but if we always have it in their face, they're going to be able to see, "Oh, this is what this is about."
I agree. And so, just, you know, part of, on all these items, we've got a master calendar that we put together with the district, too, that literally, day by day, has a plan on how things and when things are released. And there's a method to that madness in terms of how things kind of domino one way or another with the information. We can always be flexible with that, depending on the type of questions that are coming up, but...
So, where is this master calendar?
So, right now, it's in our possession. We haven't shared it with the district yet because we've been kind of doing a draft of it, but that'll be part of the weekly discussion we have with them moving forward.
Is this extra work I'll follow, Jenny?
Let's see.
Is this extra?
No, 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 no. No. Although Jenny has been a tremendous help as we've been needing to release things on social media and put things up on the website. We take on the lion's share of the creation of this content. The board... The district then approves it. We get their input on it. And then, we, in a lot of cases, we will get it to Jenny to get put up on things.
I would just add that, you know, keeping with the feedback we got through the poll, you know, the phone polls that were conducted, you know, it's clear that hitting multiple different forums and points and examples of communication is a key. So, we're using social media, we're using the district website, but we have another community-wide newsletter that's gonna be hitting mailboxes, I think, Jenny, at the end of this, by the end of this week.
Yeah.
That provides more updated information, and it does include a QR code to take people to these videos. And these are just the first four videos. We have a whole nother series of additional videos. You know, I see we have some of our staff in the audience here tonight. I mean, we did interviews with our Ag teachers, our Tech Ed teachers, our physical education teachers, all of those videos. We haven't even released those yet, so you're all gonna be Facebook and video famous coming out here soon, because those are additional teaching and learning spaces that we wanna feature, and we haven't even gotten to yet. So, there's more coming.
Yeah. It's a... In one way, it's a fun time, in another, it's a little tough time, because you don't wanna put a part of it worth it, however. So, we wanted you guys to work through this process. But we also need to get started on the things and get things moving, so there wasn't a month-long delay after you guys meeting this session either. Display boards, so in every school, there will, as people walk in, there will be boards with basically all the information you might expect to see on the fact sheet and additional visuals that will be on there, so people can look at that, again, just get a QR code, get their questions answered. Also, at district events, we're already compiling that list with the district. Those boards will be available, there'll be information handed out as well. So, while people are there, maybe they're at a concert, maybe they're at a parent-teacher conference, whatever it might be, there's a lot of those things happening this fall. There'll be a constant flow of, when they're building, getting information. We just mentioned mailers and newsletters. We'll look at a series of those. For the people, again, wanting to have things in their hands, we'll have a presentation that's already probably eighty-five percent there, based, because Ryan's already been engaging with folks out there to help tell the story of the facility planning. Now, we'll add that to the referendum itself. But the nice part about that presentation is, whether it's Ryan, a board member, you name it, going out and meeting with the group and giving a presentation, let's say that there's twenty slides in there, you might only want to use three or four of them for that particular event, right? So, it allows you to kind of scale that presentation to a well-meaning people. We mentioned the information at events, those are supposed to be district events. We've got probably, right now, we haven't set exact dates yet, but we're looking at probably four public forums, Tuit Grant, Tuit High School. We're gonna invite folks in, allow them to get a presentation, get questions answered, and then take a tour of the building, similar to what a lot of the folks here have been able to do in most buildings. So, we'll structure those where some will happen in late September, some will happen later in October. So, it'll hit the people that wanna learn about things fairly early on, and then it'll also hit the people that maybe start paying attention a little later in the process and they want to steal information. And then, what I... Bottom right there, what I consider probably one of the more important efforts, going back to one of our drivers we talked about before, which is going to where people are and how they prefer to communicate. We're already working with the district to build a really comprehensive list of civic organizations and their meetings, business leaders, and then parent groups. And again, that's all encompassing. There's other groups in there that we'll look at as well. Again, with the idea of going to them where they wanna get that information, how they wanna get the information. So, I don't wanna give you the impression that any one of these is a singular answer to your question of how we're gonna communicate. It's really the whole package. And so, I will commit to you tonight and tell you, we've got five or six people at Nexus behind the scenes that they've already been working on these things, meeting with the district, understanding how to best approach these things with them. So, we are already going, excited about that. And then, the final thing at the bottom there, I wouldn't wanna walk away tonight without really stressing that for the board members sitting around the table, really, everything we're gonna help the district do, it needs to be underpinned by your ongoing engagement. You already said you're having conversations out there. That's amazing. I would just ask that you make sure, now that you're gonna get a referendum board, and we'll communicate with you when new tools are available, that you do your very best. If you don't have an answer to something, we'll help you get it. I think what you don't wanna do is make an assumption and then find out that maybe that wasn't completely accurate. We wanna do everything we can to make sure we're getting accurate answers out there to people. And that goes for... There'll be communication going out to staff as well. So, that goes to for staff, and while we tell them the same thing. And anybody else that is out there talking about the referendum. So, again, home base will be that website. There'll be all those different tools being employed and more. And then, it's really incumbent upon you to make sure you know you can help get those answers out there as well. Any questions on...
What's the price tag on all this?
Well, we... I think in other camps, we got selective. We work on an at-risk basis, so we don't get paid until you get funding. So, we've been... We do all this until...
We get paid... We begin to get paid when things are built.
Yeah. So, we do all this, Kathy, and anybody else here.
But is there a price tag that gets added after all of this is...
Sure, sure. Yeah. There's an investment that we've been, you know, documenting throughout, but it's about less than one percent of the total cost of everything in terms of the upfront getting funding, so...
And when we looked at this, when we looked at interviewing everybody coming in, we looked at what the fees were gonna be and the charges, and Nexus was right down at the bottom.
Yeah. And I say, we're maybe not always the cheapest. I don't think you're always looking for the cheapest. I think you're looking for the firm that can help you get things successful, so...
So, is that one percent of the total referendum? Or one percent of what?
Yeah. So, I said the average one percent. And sometimes in a bigger district like this, it comes well below one percent. Sometimes in smaller districts, it might be above that. So, that's just kind of a guideline at this point, because really, as you see here, there's a ton of work to be done yet that we haven't really engaged in. a ton of work to be done yet, and we haven't really engaged in. Again, we're working at, especially with the formality, they're all part of the selection process, there's no return on our formative investment, it looks you guys are successful, so that's how we approach it. Any other questions on...
When will that link be active?
So no later than the 13th of August, so, which is what, next week, Tuesday?
Tuesday.
The facility study page is still active in the meantime.
Okay.
Right.
I just tried it, that's why I wanted to ask.
Yes. Yeah, we will be switching from the facility study website to that one, some of the information will switch over for sure. But I say no later than the 13th, because again, that's, that's when your events start happening at school. But when we meet tomorrow morning with the district, we always try to put pressure on our folks to beat that.
I think they actually start on the 12th.
Is it the 12th? Okay, so then the 12th. So, yeah, whatever the date was, I know I have the list, I have it in front of me, but whatever the first event was, we want to be able to say to folks that showed up. By the way, the board has approved regulations for referendum number 5, here's the regulation, so.
What about news here, for Marshall, this terror, there's also a term?
Yeah, that's, I did put that up there, it's definitely a part of it. I know there was an article that just came out on the most recent polling results, and then Ryan is in contact with them to have an article.
City Times is here tonight.
Yeah. Ryan's in contact with them about an article for the results of tonight as well.
Just want to be sure, because I know that's an important resource for people.
Absolutely. Thank you. So we're almost done. Jeff's going to come up and finish up, and then obviously, if you have any other questions we have to answer.
I do want to add that one thing. When we did hire Nexus, especially for the board members, there were no hidden fees, there are no hidden numbers, it was all in the hiring file. So for all the board members that were here, if they were at it, they knew what was going on.
But I've seen some of the output from Nexus, from other locations, and they did a phenomenal job, from what I've been told, so that helps.
Thank you. Jeff and I can't take credit for that, we...
Got a good... Two more slides. There we go, yep. So real quick, I'll reinforce a few points that have already been made. When we were hired in October, you know, we made it clear that one of the reasons why the name Nexus, or one of the reasons we exist and chose the name Nexus is because we recognize that in order for a project to be successful, you must bring together the technical, financial, and the political or communication. So back in October, as we began our financial and technical homework, we essentially started our communications development. And so some of the pieces, in fact, on our weekly calls, we utilize our team to explain what they're working on, various PowerPoints they've developed and so forth. So we're working off of a base that's already been created, and that'll continue to happen throughout the referendum campaign. And so, you know, there's multiple communication tools at our disposal, videos we talked about, the website, printed material, online materials. So I was told once that the purpose of a referendum campaign is wider community education. And so Nicole, the comments you made earlier, I think it's very natural, you know, people haven't been paying attention, and it's our job to make them pay attention, and that usually occurs during this period of time, because they're not paying attention too much, and that's typical in every district we work in, so. As Kevin said a moment ago, as a board member, you can advocate. Advocate simply means you can suggest to people that they vote yes. That is within your right as a citizen, as a board member. Different rules for different people, we'll talk all about that tonight. But of course, you cannot take district funds and resources and utilize them for any advocacy efforts. But again, board members can advocate. And as evidence of that, and I know that what other people do in other districts has its limits for point comparisons, but I'll give you a couple right now. When LaSaw passed in 2022, their yes committee was headed up by a board member, Karen Van DeBerg. So just FYI. And then in Stevens Point, Bard Portson, who's still on the board, I believe, was very active on the yes committee. So I know that comes as, you know, it's new news to you, but in districts where we've worked, we've had a high degree of advocacy from board members.
If I, if I may, Joe, just quick interject, for board members, before you leave this evening, we do have a memo from our bond council that we're working with. A bond council is Allison Buchanan at Quarles, and it's a memo that they provide for board members to outline the do's and don'ts, the types of things that Jeff is referring to. So we will get you a copy of this before you leave today, and ask you to read through it so that you are informed of these types of details that Jeff is reviewing right now. Thank you.
And then we recommend, when you encounter a question or a person whose questions you can't answer, you know, one of the best things to do is to direct them to the website or to Dr. Christensen for an answer. So with that, that completes our presentation.
Yeah, we literally, as you can imagine, on a Monday night in Marshfield, could spend hours with you going through this, and I think what we wanted, again, our objective was to have you have confidence that there's a process in place. Again, we're meeting weekly with the district, and when I say we're meeting weekly, that's our formal meeting, I will probably begin to be talking daily, this is the reality with the district, to make sure they have everything they need, and by extension, the board has everything. So any questions or comments you have, it's not reserved just for tonight, obviously. If you are hearing things out in the community and you want to provide input, please let Dr. Christensen know, and we'll make sure we be here as well and adapt to work with it, so thank you.
Can I get the breakdown of what it would be for a month if your house is 200,000 versus 100,000?
Twenty. If it's 200, it'd be roughly 20 a month.
Is that what it was?
Yeah, if it's 100, it would be 10 a month. So if you have a $300,000 home, it would be about $360 a year.
Okay.
And well, just so you know, Nicole, I don't have, I'd hand it to you now if I had it from, I don't have it from, but that'll be definitely part of the website, that'll be part of the fact sheet. So we want to make sure that's logically clear out there for everybody, so people are not surprised at all by your better, so.
All right. Anything else?
And I guess one of the, and then we'll let you go. You talked about 50 million versus 71 million, I think you all also gave us some information. Reality is, certainly, there's going to be sticker shock, I don't want to debate that at all, but there is also the other reality is, whether it was 50 million or 71 million, there isn't a significant change. I mean, we're talking dollars per month for people, for most people, in terms of the change to their impact, so.
Well, thank you to the facility committee at Nexus and everybody who has been working so hard on this.
Yeah, we have a number of members of the facility planning committee that attended the meeting here, I think by count at least five of you formally on the committee, so thank you for making it this evening.
You lose the deal here. Give him, give him one minute to return.
All right, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I hope to adjourn.
And just take the roll.
Mrs. Forst?
Yes.
Ms. Tramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser?
Yes.
Mr. Conrady?
Yes.
Mr. Yipitis?
Yes.